Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 1st, 2019 Town of East Hampton Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. We have a full schedule this evening as usual. Before we get going, I want to say that this will be the last evening we will have the pleasure of having Elizabeth Baldwin as our zoning board attorney, and I wanted to make note of that. Anyone who's glued to the TV every Tuesday night knows what a wonderful person Beth is. And we were just chatting. She's been here on the zoning board as an attorney for about 10 years. So, and she, I've been here five years, and she's just been a pleasure to work with. I know that, I speak for the whole board, and I know I speak for John Roy, who are not with us this evening, how much this board appreciates her service, her dedication, her personality, and her humor, and her thorough work that she's done for the town of East Hampton. So, thank you so much, Beth, and I appreciate it. I don't know if board members, do you want to add to that?
No, that was well said, John. We wish Beth nothing but the best.
Yes.
Thank you.
Come back and visit us, and don't give us your phone number. Talk more at the party.
The Village of East Hampton is going to be blessed with Beth's position in the Village of East Hampton, and we certainly do wish her all the best.
Thank you.
So, we will move on. We do have, one, two, three, what do we have here? Four public hearings this evening and some other business to take care of. So, we'll get to our first public hearing this evening. The applicant is Michael Coppola, and the lot size and location is 10, pardon me, 108,749 square feet at 83 Fairview Avenue, Montauk Beach Development Corp., Montauk Inn Residential Section, Montauk Tax Map Number 300-19-8-1.5. The description is to allow a partially existing slate pool patio, walkway, and generator to remain and extend. Construction of a patio and pergola, fire pit, slate walkways, stairs, a fence, steps, and pool equipment on a parcel land containing freshwater wetlands. A relief sod as a natural resources special permit, and six variances. Variances of 31.7 feet, 15 feet, 44.3 feet, 32 feet, 82 feet, and 72 feet are required. Let's see. And this is in a, the FEMA's, pardon, the FEMA zone here, flood zone here is X, and it's kind of got cut off here a little bit on my public notice. Let me just check. Yeah, I have it here. Pardon me. We are in an A3 residential zone, and the secret class is type 2. And pardon me, I have to go back. My text was cut off there. I'm going back to the relief sod here. I'm going to reread this just to get it into the record correctly. The variances of 31.7 feet, 15 feet, 44.3 feet, 32 feet, 82 feet, and 72 feet are required to allow the construction of a patio with pergola and fire pit 68.3 feet, stairs located 85 feet, a slate walkway located 55.7 feet, relocated pool equipment 67 feet, a fence along the clearing line located at its closest 18 feet, and an existing generator located 28 feet from wetlands where 100-foot setbacks is required, and any other relief necessary from East Hampton Town Code. And again, A3 residence zone, flood zone is X, and secret class is type 2. And counsel, do we have a proper affidavit of service and posting?
We do have the affidavit of service and posting. Appears that notice was properly.
Thank you. Thank you. And this is in board member Berger's Montauk District. Terry, if you would, please.
Okay. This is the front driveway, and you can see it was properly posted on the telephone call over there. And I'm going to walk up the driveway. This is a shot looking up at, get a little view of the house, and then there's a little triangular, triangular garden bed that you can see on the subway, on the survey. Next. Now, I walked up to the point on that vegetated area on the center of the driveway, and this is a shot of the area to the, I guess it's southeast generally, general direction, and it's part of the area that the planning department has recommended a revegetation in the TAM, and that also goes around more southerly and toward the west also. Next. Now, standing, I walked up, and this is a view of the western, the western part of the house. Behind those shrubs and the wooden fences where the pool equipment is currently exist, the, that you see on the survey. And then I'll be walking back toward the pool and then around the other portion of the property. That's a shot from that, basically to the, I'm standing where the proposed slate patio is on the survey, and it's a shot of the view and the barbecue. I believe, yeah, the barbecue is now. That was not on the, the survey. That was last given. Next. That's a shot like behind there, back into the wetlands and part of the area where the revegetation is also proposed. That's a shot from behind the pool, looking back toward the house where you see slate patio that exists, stairs that look new that are going up to the second floor patio, the decking. Next. Now, I just turned, and I'm walking toward or looking toward the north, north area beyond the pool. You can see there's a lot of lawn in the space and the area to the pool, right in front where the pool is. Now, I take that back. The slate patio already exists. You can see it just inside the fence line, and it's a shot looking toward the, I guess toward the north of the property. And there's, there's a lot of lawn space here, and there's a scenic easement and some clearing that had been done. Next, see some of that closer. This is an area toward the, it should be the west side, southwest area of the house, of the property, and part of the area, I think where the proposed fence is, is looking to go. But you can see that there was some clearing done. They do have, have the leaf litter, but there were some large mature trees that were cut down. There were stumps, some stumps left there, aside from the wood pile.
Little bit of evidence.
Yeah. Now, I went, I'm on the opposite side of the pool, the closest to the brick patio and looking down toward the southern part of the property, just to give you a better view of the slate patio that is in there. And next, that's a shot, I turned around 180 degrees, and that's a shot of the property from that, that same location, and you could see in the distance, you could see, there's a marker to the left of that tree. I'm not sure what that designates unless it's the, where they want to put the fence. I'm not sure. They can explain that. And then to the right of that, you see the, just the wood bridge. There's another wood bridge that was depicted on the, sorry, I didn't see that that exists. I think that's not there yet, but if you go to the next one, you get a better shot. I'm now standing at the northern part of the house itself, and it gives you a better shot of the lawn and the area to the, where the wood, wood bridge is, and an area to be revegetated between that and the edge of clearing. And the scenic, scenic easement is to the right of that, that whole area. Next. That's the next one? Oh, that, that shows more of the area shot into the scenic easement part of it. And this is a shot up the north, I guess it's northern part of the, of the house on the side where it shows the steps and the shower. That's all existing today. And the gate, there's that fence, there was no gate on the fence today. And next, that's a shot outside the fence again, just looking toward more, and I thought, I thought in the left side you could see there's a neighbor's house through the, through the woods, but no. Is there another shot?
There you can.
Oh, okay, that's the one you can see the house better, the northern neighbor. And I believe that's it. I thought I had a shot of the...
Well, that was a pretty thorough report, Terry.
Of the generator.
That was great.
Well, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Jim? Nope. Okay. Good evening, Joel. I shall swear the end. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I affirm to do that.
Counsel?
I'm going to miss that.
I have something better every time. How's that sound?
A simple yes is fine, Joel, in the future.
It's no fun if it's just a simple yes, no. Good evening. Joel Halsey on behalf of the applicant, Michael Coppola and Stacy Graham, the new property owners. The parcel has changed hands twice since the 2014 ZBA permit was issued for a pool. I see Mr. Becker in the audience, who the, the property owner was when the pool permit was issued. The new owners recently bought the property and started the process to build the pool. I got a building permit for them to build the pool, and that was the extent of my involvement until the stop work was ordered, ordered was issued. The applicants began to build the pool, and it turns out that as they were building the pool, the pool was only for a pool. There was no decking. So, they decided, oh, let's try to get some decking. So, they, they spoke to the contractor, and the contractor said, sure, we can build decking around the pool. Let me get the building permit. They approached the building department, submitted a building permit application, and a building permit was issued for decking around the pool, and that's the decking that you see right there. There was also a building permit issued for some decking that isn't in there yet because they were going to build until the stop work was ordered, was issued, and then there was going to be a pergola right here. I have copies of that building permit. If the board would like to see those.
I think it'd be good for the file if we don't have them in case things have been, can't hurt for the file. Thank you.
And what kind of decking was it for?
I think it was all going to slate.
No, it says wood deck.
Last I spoke to them, I think they were going to match it all up, whether it's wood or slate. I'm, I'm not sure, you know, to the extent of what that would matter, you know, I mean, if, once you get the decking built, yeah, I guess if you were to remove it, you would technically need a natural resource special permit. If you were messing with the structure, which if you went from wood to slate, then that would be the matter. But I guess once it's approved, I'm not sure if the material of what the decking would matter, provided it wasn't treated lumber, because you don't really want to use CCA, or I don't know if you can even get CC anymore, or ACQ for the decking in this area. That said, you know, I don't know if the board has any questions, you know, I hope I address the questions as to why that decking is built without proper zoning board of appeals permits. I think that the contractor thought he was doing his due diligence by going to the building department and getting a building permit, which he did get. The building department mistakenly issued the building permit for there. Regarding the pool equipment, no, there was no pool equipment associated with the original approver, approval. It wasn't shown. So, I guess it's my, my assumption that they, they chose a spot next to the house, and that's where they wanted the pool equipment. I, I don't know why that was put where it was, but at least they, they chose a good location for it. And with regards to the generator on the other side, I'm not sure when that was put in, but again, that was located in an area of existing patio right next to the AC units. So, that's the extent of what was built without proper zoning board of appeals permits right now before you for those structures and the, to complete the project, which would now include the decking with the pergola and a pool, a pool fence to a greater extent that would encompass the yard up to the scenic easement line.
Okay. So, the, the pool equipment where it is today is where it's going to remain?
That's, yes.
Since that's an existing thing, you're just trying to legalize it?
Yes.
Okay. And then you still want the slate patio in this area of lawn here? They're still looking?
Yes, they still want it, yes.
And slate as opposed to wood?
Um, you know...
You know, the slate is impervious and...
Wood is technically impervious, too.
Terms of the...
I mean, it's still going to count, no, either way you look at it, it's going to count what's covered.
Well, you need a, you need a variance for it, right? And an NRSP.
I'd need a variance for slate as well.
Yeah, but the wood could be placed so that the stormwater runoff might be better than slate, which...
Okay. If, if the board prefers wood, I'm sure that they, they would be amenable to just doing wood.
How did it end up being slate?
Well, the origi, the, the original patio was always to be slate.
The one, yeah.
Around the pool.
But there was never one approved. We approved the pool.
Yeah, you never approved the pool.
Right. We never approved any of it.
Right.
So, I have a few, if you're finished, Terry, I just wanted two questions.
For now, yeah.
For now. I want to talk about the clearing that took place. I, I believe that the scenic easement was filed with the county, who was taking care of the legal documents, but none of the revegetation work was done.
The revege wasn't to be done until the issuance of the certificate of ag.
Right, but they built the pool, but they didn't apply for a C of O.
We can't get a CO because the stop work order is shown on the property.
I know. So, were they, I'm just curious, that they weren't, they weren't, they weren't trying to get a C of O, but they, meanwhile, they were trying to get a building permit to do more decking. I'm...
Well, they were, they were, this, they were, they got the building permit to do the decking before, as the pool was being built.
Okay.
So, it wasn't like they built the pool and they were, they should have gotten their CO. They were, the pool was in the process, you could see the pictures of when the stop work order was issued, they were still, the pool wasn't even dusted yet.
Okay. So, so, as I guess they fully intend on doing that, we've, well, it must be done.
They have to, they have to before the issuance.
It has to be done. And I think in the future, we might make that happen sooner rather than later with these permits, but that's another matter. But are you offering any, any mitigation, any other revegetation?
Well, I'd like, I'll, within the technical analysis...
We can listen to the, maybe we listen to Alenny on this, and then you can comment, we can...
Sure, I will comment, actually, in my presentation. There were five points in the technical analysis memo that I did want to touch on.
Sure.
They, they mentioned that the, the applicant should address how the variances does not cause an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. Obviously, you know, it's a swimming pool in a residential neighborhood. Pools are located in residential neighborhoods, so there would be no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. How cannot be achieved by some other method than the requested variances? We're, we're trying to get decking around a pool. The pool is within variance jurisdiction, so any decking that was, would be associated with that pool would, by default, be within variance jurisdiction as well. So, we must apply for a variance to get it. And will it have any adverse effect on the, the impact or the environment of the neighborhood? You're increasing the, the coverage on this property minimally to, you know, 500, you know, for a, actually, the sizes aren't on here, you know, 600 square feet for the decking in the patio. It should have a minimal adverse effect on, on the environment in this area. Second, that was addressed in the fire pit, the applicant should also speak to how they plan to grade around the area adjacent to the fire pit. I do have some pictures of this area, if the board would like to see them.
Thank you.
Now, that's the permanent location for the barbecue, too? Where it is now?
I definitely...
Was it on the survey?
I would be a little late too much, but, well, that would be...
I think that's where the, the deck would eventually...
I don't think it shows on the...
No, that doesn't, I mean, it's a, I mean, that can be moved in, I mean, it's, it's big, but it's not, you know, I, yes, I guess that would probably be the permanent location of that barbecue. I'm not, I'd have to discuss that with the property owner.
Yeah, just, you know, so we have the variance in the distance from the wetlands and the NRSP, correct?
Sure. Now, as you can see by the, the photo I just submitted, there is, there's a slight downward grade from the corner over here, which you can't see very well in this picture, down, but, you know, to submit a grading plan for a 225-square-foot, you know, patio for all intents and purposes that you're going to put a fire pit on, I, I don't know if that's necessary. I mean, you're going to flatten the area out a little bit and, and put in a, you know, a fire pit. So, I, you know, that, if, if the board would like to see a grading plan for that, it's definitely something we can prepare. Other than that, you know, again, it's, it's a small area. There isn't much of a grade in that area, as you can see by the pictures. Maybe it slopes down eight inches from, from the edge of the pool down to where the edge of the fire pit will be. The planning department also recommends that the wetland buffer be restored on the southeast portion of the property, since the proposed construction will be, will affect the wetlands more directly. Now, if you could see this area, it says it's going to direct the wetlands, these wetlands more directly. The parcel kind of slopes up before it slopes down to that wetland, so I, I don't know how it's, you know, a, a small amount of decking is going to affect, in a already cleared area that's a lawn right now, is going to affect that wetland.
It's, it does slope towards the south, towards the southeast wetland more, correct?
Well, the wetland that they're referencing is this one.
Yeah.
So, it slopes up, and then it slopes down. So, the, the patio's going to go here. It's going to slope up from the patio, as you can kind of, it's tough to see from the picture, but it will slope up, and then it'll, it'll drop down towards the wetland. The, the applicants are amenable to doing a revege along that wetland line, along the clearing line that is along the wetland line, but the, the planning department's recommending 5,790 square feet of revegetation. That's 2,582 square feet more than was required for the pool application in 2014.
How much more?
2,582 square feet more than what was required in the 2014 application for the pool. And again, the applicants are amenable to doing a revegetation plan. They refer the number to be around 2,500 square feet. The wetland, the revegetation would run the length of the clearing line and extend outward to that number that the board agrees with.
You know, my feeling is that you're asking for some pretty substantial variances that weren't contemplated in that 2014 ZBA determination.
Yeah.
And I would say that perhaps the ZBA determination didn't appropriately contemplate the protection of that wetland. So, I, I think there's some analogy here in, in the, the, the extreme of, of some of the requests as it relates to, to the wetlands. So, I would like to see revegetation that, that protects that wetland to the greatest extent that, that we can agree upon here.
And again, we are amenable to doing that. And when you say substantial variances, only about two of the requested variances are substantial, and that's for the generator and the pool fence. The other variances are, you know, we're requesting a 31-foot variance, a 15-foot variance, a 44-foot variance, and a 32-foot variance.
Yes, or stated differently, a 31% variance, a 15% variance, a 44% variance, a 32% variance, an 82% variance, and a 72%.
Yes, and I...
So, we can argue over the, the word substantial. I would argue that those percentages are in fact substantial.
I know traditionally, when the variance was exceeded 50%, that is when the substantial threshold was hit. I don't know if that's changed since I was with the town.
Well, nonetheless, we still, just moving along, we still do. I, I just want to add to Tim's point. I, I was on the board when we approved this, and I remember, I think I even commented that perhaps without any slate paving around it, it was going to minimize the impact, and I, I remember this application. But I must say to Tim's point, I'm surprised that we actually didn't look, did not look for something between the pool and the wetlands there. So, I agree with Tim. I'm certainly going to be looking for something here because, you know, with the paving, the coverage, the activity, and the standards that we have, we'll, we'll be reasonable, I'm sure.
Like I said, we are definitely amenable to doing it, but again, the pool, it slopes up from here, and then it reaches a peak. So, whatever goes in here is going that way. Any runoff is going that way, not towards the wetland that you're trying to protect at this point with this revegetation.
There's other things, too. But why don't we listen to the planning department?
And the fencing, the fencing, I do, you know, the 18, 82-foot.
Well, I just, and that's, I'm touching on the fence, well, I'm going to touch on the project limiting fence that they would like to see for this, the project.
Do we have those in the file?
It's, it's in the, project limiting fence consisting of straw, it's on, it's the first condition of the mitigation. They would like to see a project limiting fence that runs... All the way around here.
Say again?
Where's, where's?
From here, all the way around here. Again, you know, we're definitely amenable to putting up project limiting fence, but it seems like a substantial amount of fence and straw bales to be putting on, on a property for, something that's already built, one, we would do, you know, 250-square-foot fire, fire pit, which we could do a small amount of fence there, and then, you know, just a line of fence there, which would make, to me, make more sense rather than bringing in probably over 100 straw bales to...
And do they have the whole house encircled?
At this point, no.
In your diagram, why don't you come up here just for a second? Then we, then, then we all know, and then we can talk to the, Alenny about this as well. But has she, has Alenny seen this?
This is their recommendation.
Okay. Let's just see. Alenny, you want to step up just so you, you can see what we're looking at? Good evening, thank you. Okay, so...
Yep, so, um...
Right. I don't know. Does that seem...
Which would be to protect these wetlands as well as over here.
I mean, the only thing we're actually putting in here is this fire pit to protect those wetlands. Again, it slopes up before it slopes down, so you're not really, you're actually not really wanting to work there, too. So, anything that...
You're building this.
The work is buried down here.
The work is done here, but so anything's going to flow that way, because that's the way the topography goes. So, you're putting anything here, it's really a...
Well, it might be a matter of containing the, the work.
It's all lawn.
Contain, yeah, I know.
It's clear.
Well, let's let Alenny give her presentation, and then we'll come back to this and see what you two can work out or something like that. Okay? And then you can step back up, Joel, all right? So, Al...
Was there, was there a fifth point?
Was your fifth, I'm sorry.
Done with your five points?
No, I'm not done.
Okay. We want to move along. We want to move along.
Sure. And finally, they, I guess to your point earlier, how you, you might be changing the revegetation, there's just a, a small amount of work left to be done on this. We'd love to get the work done, issue, get the building permit issued, and then close it all out with a CO, have the revegetation all done, and then close it out with a CO. We'd rather not have to wait, you know, do the revegetation. We actually, we could even, we'll even start the revegetation.
I don't, I think you could have started it a long time ago, myself.
The original?
The original.
Well, the project started, if, if there wasn't...
I don't think there, anything was competing you from commencing that a long time ago.
The original scenic easement and the vegetation.
Yeah, most people, I, most people don't typically start the revegetation.
Okay, but, okay, so your point is...
My point is, you know, for, just to finish up the, you know, the, the patio, to, you know, to get that work done prior to the issue, you know, to get to be able to get the building permit instead of requiring, you know, the, you know, the revegetation along the wetland line, and, you know, we will start this, we'll start, we'll start it now, but, you know, we'd like to be able to get the building permit at the, you know, the same time.
Finish all the building at the same time.
But we can't start the revegetation over here until we know what the ZBA determination's going to say.
Right.
So, we can't actually get the building permit for that either.
I, I think we understand you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm listening. Sure. Could you just recap your five points again, the revegetate? I'm sorry. Do it briefly.
We got it.
It was, it was, you know, the applicant should address whether the variances, you know, don't cause an undesirable change to the neighborhood. The fire pit, you know, a grading plan for the fire pit, the, the amount of revege that the planning department is require, you know, requesting, recommending, the project, the, the amount of project limiting fence that they're requesting, and whether, you know, a building permit can be issued prior to the issuance of a, the revege or prior to the issuance of a CO.
And could you just clarify, what year was the pool constructed?
The pool, they, it's the summer they started.
Oh, this summer?
Yeah.
So, that was not in there until the summer?
No, no. They got the stop work order this summer and, actually, no, sorry.
I thought that it was for the deck and pergola that it was...
The stop work order was issued, yeah, I think it was at the beginning, it was in the spring, sorry, not the summer, the spring.
But that wasn't for the pool, that was for the...
For everything.
That was for everything.
Yeah, and, but the building department allowed them to finish the work on the pool.
I see, okay, all right. Thank you.
Oh, and actually, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Joel. Okay, good evening again, Eleni.
Good evening.
I'll swear you in for the hearing. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have the survey and with the revegetation that we're suggesting, so I'll just bring that up.
Great, great.
So, the subject property is surrounded in wetlands by three sides. So, this line here, you can see the wetland line goes all the way around here, follows through here, and then there's this wetland in here. And over half of the parcel contains freshwater wetlands. The property is also pre-existing non-conforming to current clearing regulations, and it is cleared within 50 feet of the wetland on this side. So, the planning department is suggesting a revegetation that would not only serve as a buffer for the wetland, but would also bring the clearing level very close to conformity. Not completely, but very close.
What would it bring us to?
So, with the suggested, with this suggested revegetation, it would bring it to 24,109 square feet. Conformity would be 23,302.
Okay, 24,9?
24,109.
109.
So, it's 807 square feet short of conformity with the planning department's suggested revegetation. So, this would be appropriate due to the extent of the wetlands on the parcel. So, we would like to see native woody vegetation that would help protect water quality and restore native habitat that's associated with freshwater wetlands. The scenic easement was established on the property, and they did not yet do the revegetation that was associated with that. So, it had been cleared, they didn't clear it. It had been cleared, and then they were supposed to revegetate. There's also these two wooden bridges that are actually allowed in the language of the easement. And we're suggesting that any revegetation take place before any further work takes place on the parcel.
On both sides, from the original determination as well as the new?
Yeah, we are suggesting that just because this hasn't taken place yet, which it didn't have to. It was part of, it was a condition based on the CO, but it hasn't taken place yet, and there would be a lot of work being done, and, you know, vegetated areas do help to protect the wetlands.
Could you comment on the project limiting fence? Because I think that may-
Sure.
-play into the same concerns about equipment and protecting those wetlands.
Yeah, so we're, we're pretty much just looking to, it does slope down here, so we're looking to protect these wetlands. The property, since it's pretty much surrounded by wetlands, we're looking to protect these wetlands over here, and then over here. It does slope up slightly, but it would just be, because most of the work is being done in this area, that's where the patio and the, like, the pavers, the stairs are going to go. That's why there is project limiting fence over here as well. There's pretty much, it's surrounded, so we want to protect as much as we can.
Could you comment?
The stairs, the stairs are not there already?
There's supposed stairs right here.
Oh, okay, to go up to the second floor deck? Okay.
Eleni, could you comment on Joel's comments about the best place to do the revegetation, whether it's the wetlands to the east or those more to the south and west?
So, the reason why we're suggesting over here is because this is pretty much already supposed to be revegetated. And within, right here, I don't have the exact distance, but it's pretty close. There's not really a buffer. It's pretty much cleared very close to this wetland. So, we're kind of, we're suggesting re-vedge. It wouldn't even be, I think it's 31 feet? I'm not sure on that, but it wouldn't be 50 feet. So, the code currently requires a 50-foot clearing at that for wetlands, and this wouldn't even be 50 feet.
Oh, yeah, well, that's a very good point. Also, again, I just want, maybe you can comment on this as well. As far as just over time, we can't police, police the fertilizing of the lawns and what goes on those lawns. And even though there is a slight rise and then a slope wave, it would seem to me that over time, things in the soil are percolating and eventually just going with the flow, not necessarily all the surface water that might, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, it would, I mean, I have, I do have an aerial photo with the topography. If you can pull up if you wanted to.
Sure, yes, thank you. I mean, I understand Joel's point with regard to surface waters, but over time, things are percolated into the soil. Where it's going to go once it gets percolating.
Pollards around that whole area.
It's a little busy, but you can see the weather there.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so within the site, that's-
So, I mean, it does slope up and then down, but it isn't-
Right, right. Right. I'm just curious, what's the lowest, can you, the lowest of that wetland we're talking about, what that elevation is at the bottom of it? I'm just curious how low it is. Yeah, that, that-
55.
And then up by the slate patio or the pool area that we're talking about? Yeah, somewhere like that.
63.
Right. Oh, no, in the back, yeah.
Oh, in the back over here.
Yeah, somewhere like that there, yes, yeah.
62.
So, in other words, it's higher than-
It is higher than the wetland.
Yes.
Thank you, Eleni. Any other questions for Eleni, board members?
No.
Right, so maybe, I guess down the road, when it comes to the way, when we make our decisions and all, it might be a thing where the two of you are working together, and we might, as a condition, possibly, that sort of thing. Board members, does that make sense? And when we have a full board, the other board members will be watching this public hearing, so they will be participating as well.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your work on this, Eleni.
Thank you.
Joel, anything? We'll hear from the public first. Is there anyone here in the public who would like to speak on this application? Yes, sir? And if you could just introduce yourself for the record, please?
Excuse me?
If you could introduce yourself for the record?
Oh, yes, I would. That's my first line. Anyway, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Richard Becker. I'm the former owner of the property being discussed, and I currently reside next door.
You have to be sworn in first.
Yeah, you have to be sworn in too. And also, could you give us your address for the record, your current address?
89 Fairview Avenue.
Okay. Brittany, just so Brittany has to get this down. If you're not an attorney, I have to swear you in?
Okay.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. No, you can go ahead.
I live right here. That's my house.
Okay.
My former house. Anyway, just so you know.
Yeah.
Anyway, my name is Richard Becker, a former owner of the property being discussed, and I currently reside next door and probably the only one that is visually impacted by this project. First, I'd like to state that I know there is a need for this process. If it were not for it, I wouldn't live in one of the most beautiful spots in all of Montauk. But, I don't like that these proceedings tend to deepen a divide between neighbors. I don't deny Mr. Coppola the right to have a swimming pool, as I was the one to obtain the original permit from the town and the DEC. I knew it would be built by somebody eventually. My problem lies with the pool company or designers that led Mr. Coppola to believe that this project, which was originally permitted and compliant with all town of East Hampton setbacks, could morph into an all-out backyard entertainment area, which now needs about 10 variances to continue to exist. Their failure to understand the rules and what was allowed to be built bothers me, and I believe Mr. Coppola was misinformed by them and ended up here before this board today. Regardless of this board's decision on this matter, life will go on, and Mr. Coppola and I will still be neighbors. I just wanted to be here tonight to have my voice heard. Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming out. We appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak? No? Okay. Joel, you want to wrap it up?
I guess I'm, you know, just, just to retouch on the, you know, the project limiting fence and kind of the amount that they're requiring, and as you can see, they want to protect this wetland. But, you know, the deck is going in a topography of 62. It slopes up to, you know, 63, 64, 65 before it starts sloping down. So, you're protecting, you know, sedimentation from going uphill?
So, you're also protecting where the workers are going to be coming and going?
Again, this is, it's a completely, I mean, you could, it's cleared for 50 feet between the house and the clearing line.
What is your objection to project limiting fence?
No, I don't have any, I said, I don't have any, I don't have any objection to project limiting fence. I have an objection to the substantial amount of project limiting fence. That is a, that's probably 100 straw bales at least that they're going to need to bring into this property and chuck out of this property, when they could do something, a little line here and a little L there, and get the same accomplishment. Again, I don't have any objection to project, I never said I had an objection to it, I just have an objection to the amount. That's a large, I mean, if you were to measure the amount of project limiting fence, it would be a substantial amount of project limiting fence for a 225-square-foot fire pit and a 400-square-foot patio.
I guess, given the amount of wetlands on this property, doesn't it seem prudent to have some barrier or guide as to where the workers will come and go?
I mean, I highly doubt that they're going to go, when they have a 50-foot opening between here and here, that they're going to walk all the way around to the wetlands and be here to do work right here. I mean- You know, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm not going to argue it all night, but, you know, to me, it doesn't make sense. It's a large amount of project limiting fence for a small project. I mean, that's enough fence, you know, to build the, that would be enough to build the house.
Well, maybe we will, I think we'll take all this into consideration at the work session, maybe we'll end up marking up the survey with either the fence as it is, or maybe a little less in certain areas, and, or we could, or we could leave the written record open for you and Eleni to come up with a scheme. I don't know if that makes any sense.
I don't know that that makes sense.
Yeah, I think we just kind of, let's just-
I think we know what-
I think we, we know your side, we know what the planning side is, and maybe we just, I think Terry's correct. I think we should just close this down, and we'll come up with that. And I imagine we're going to be looking for some revegetation. We've heard all of your comments on that too, and we'll take all that-
Just one more thing on the revegetation?
Yes.
If we were to start and complete the revegetation of the scenic easement, which needed to be done prior to the issuance of a CO for the pool-
Bless you.
In good faith, could you make the determination written so that we could start to get the, because we might not get the determination until, it's October 1st now. We might not get the determination till late November. We won't be in the planting season anymore. We won't be able to-
This way you can do it right now.
This way we'd be able to do it. But, in good faith, we'll start the revegetation, because we don't know what we need to revegetate. We don't even know if you're going to approve it, where we would have to revegetate in that area.
No, you mean, but you're meaning in good faith, you're going to revegetate the scenic easement.
The scenic easement area. We know we have to do that, we get that taken care of.
Do you have a planting plan that's been approved by the planning department?
Yes, we did, yes. That needed to be done prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Right. Well, I think that sounds like a nice thought to me personally, and I think we can all take all that up at the work session.
Sure.
Joel? So, thanks for mentioning that. Okay, Terry, I guess we're, we're going to close it out that way.
As a matter of Michael Coppola, tax map 300-0919-08-155, 85 Fairview Avenue in Montauk, make motion to close the public hearing and the public record.
Second.
And I concur. Thank you. Thanks, Joel. Thank you, Eleni.
Good night.
What's that? I have the, I'll pull out the file. Okay, we'll get going with our second public hearing this evening. The applicant is John F. Donovan. The lot size and location, 29,450 square feet at 57 Sammies Beach Road, East Hampton. Tax map number 300-56-1-22. Description is to modify the April 6, 2017 ZBA determination to allow the demolition of the existing residence and the construction of a new 2,462-square-foot, two-story residence with decking and a new sanitary system in a more landward location instead of renovating the existing house as approved. The relief sought as a modification of the April 6, 2017 zoning board determination. The zoning district here is A2. The flood zone here is a VE10 velocity flood zone, and the secret class is type 2. And counsel, do we have a proper affidavit of service and posting?
We do have the affidavit of service and posting, and it says proper.
Thank you. And this is in board member Brennaman's East Hampton district. Tim, if you would, please.
Sure. So, the property is properly posted. Is that the right property?
It may be. I think it does have the rounded hedges, yeah, with the rounded hedges.
Okay.
I think it is.
Oh, jeez. I've got my file opened to the wrong file. That's my problem. Okay, now I'm a little bit better. All right, so the property was properly posted. I took a quick shot just to get the general conditions out on the road of the shot to the north, and then proceeded down the driveway. And as you can see, and as you know, this property, this home is being proposed to be removed, so I primarily took photos of the conditions of the property and not so many of the house itself.
Yeah, yeah.
So, now I walked down to, I guess I'm walking, what, north at this point, to the, toward the home. And just a closer shot, it's a really, quite a beautiful area down there, as we all know. And standing in that same location, actually, I came a little bit forward and then turned back, and this is a look back up. This is just to the, to the east of the driveway. Looking back through the beautiful natural terrain.
Looking back to it Sammy's Beach Road there?
Yes.
Yeah.
I then went around to the, to the right side of the building, and then continued to the back. A shot of the stairway that you can see on the survey going out back. I then went, went farther out toward the, to the water, and took a longer shot back to the, to the back of the property, so you can see what a natural setting it is there. Standing there, I scanned to my left, and I believe these are the two houses that, and I've got another perspective of this later, but just to give you some sense for where we are along the Sammy's Beach Road there. And then, the next shot I took and scanned to the right. I then walked back up to the property, and just in the, to get a perspective of where this house is in relation to the other homes, and I would say that, as currently configured, all of these homes are roughly in the same area as it relates to their position toward the water, and that the retreat that's being proposed on this, in my view, is actually pretty substantial. So, now I'm going back around to the, what's that, the western side of the house, where there's this small structure that's off to the side. And that's somewhat significant, because as I, as I stepped it off, I believe it's about where that structure is that the proposed house would start, at least the decking of it. at least the decking of it would start and heading back. So it does sit back a good bit. I then took a quick photo along the, the border of the property, which is bamboo and quite thick bamboo, which separates this property from the neighbor. And then back out to the front of the property and just a look at the, the setting of this as you look back toward the, the home. So I'm standing out on Sammy's Beach Road. And then the final shot is I went down to the end of Sammy's Beach and took the long shot looking back. And I think this house would be the third house, it's actually kind of hard to see because it's tucked in, and it's only one story, so, but it's, it's tucked back in there, and it just gives you, again, a broader sense about the, yep, that's it, right there, so.
Yeah, it's the third house, it's a two-story large one, yep.
And I think that was it.
Thank you, thank you, Tim, for that report. Terry, any questions?
No, no, just wanted, it's another copy of the survey.
The survey, yeah, sure, yes, yes.
That's the launch search.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Tim. Okay, do we have the applicant or the applicant's agent? Good evening, Rick.
Good evening, John, members of the board, all three of you.
Yeah, exactly. May I ask before you start off, we have in front, in the file, we have, we have plans dated July 23, 2019. Are these the proposed constructions?
July 26, 2019 is what I have. By David H. Sherwood, I have the date of July 26.
Oh, revision up top, yes, okay, good. So these are the proposed.
Those are the proposals.
What you're proposing to build, okay, good, okay, thanks, good evening, Rick.
Okay, you're welcome.
Go ahead.
So this is a request to modify a decision of this board that was filed on April 6, 2017. That was to allow additions and renovations to the existing house that Member Brenneman just described and showed you on the, on the smart board here. The proposal now is to move that house, well, it'll be a new construction, but basically to move that house landward a substantial amount. And I will just describe to you the application you approved in 2017, and then what we are proposing now. So in 2017, the house that was approved at that time, by the board's decision, if you actually add up the numbers, would have been a 2,501-square-foot house. And by the way, these are all two-story, in all cases, a two-story house. We actually calculated at the time that it was a 2,429-square-foot house. The current proposed house is 2,462 square feet, so it's in that range. It's actually less, technically, less than what the board approved in 2017, 33 square feet more than we had approved, proposed in 2017. The 2017 approval was for additions to and renovation of the existing home. This would be a completely new structure. The 2017 house was a three-bedroom house, this will be a three-bedroom house. The 2017 application, this is the most notable change, that house, after renovation and addition, would have had a 52.8-foot setback from the primary dune. The new house, the house itself, will be 93 feet back from the primary dune, so the, the, the landward movement of the, of the residence is actually 40 feet. And the deck, there will be a deck on the seaward side of the house, that deck will be 75.3 feet from the primary dune. So the proposed new deck on the seaward side, the bay side of the new house, would be 75.3 feet from the dune. Under the 2017 approval, the house itself was going to be 52.8 feet from the dune. The required setback for dune, the dune setback in this area is 75 feet for new construction. There are no variances involved whatsoever. The applicant needs no relief of any sort from town code provisions. The house, which in 2017 would have remained partly within the FEMA flood zone, will now be completely outside the FEMA flood zone. We are now proposing, of course, a low-nitrogen IAOWTS sanitary system, which will be more than, more than 200 feet from the nearest wetlands, which are those on the south side of Sammy's Beach Road along Three Mile Harbor. We will revegetate the area that is exposed by removal of the existing house and deck with beech grass, simple beech grass revege. And finally, we have letters of support or emails of support came in from both of the adjoining neighbors, Boxer to the west and Cronenberg to the east, and those were by emails to the ZBA chair. So in summary, the, the proposal is to move the house basically 40 feet landward. We will be conforming then to a New York State DEC Coastal Erosion Management Permit that was issued to the applicant in April of this year. And the, should you want to keep notes of the plans and survey that are currently proposed, it's a hammer survey dated last revised July 18, 2019, and floor plans and elevations by David H. Sherwood, the architect, dated July 26 revised, 2019. So that's really all I have to say. I don't want to be presumptuous in terms of the board's decision, but if you were to approve this, the applicant, John Donovan, is here tonight, and they really would like to get going, be able to get a building permit before the winter, and obviously do the construction over the course of the winter. So if there's anything that you're able to do to expedite a decision, we would be very grateful.
Okay, thank you, Rick, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll hear from the planning department next. Good evening, Tyler. Good evening. Tyler, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I don't have much else to add. The memo that I submitted was very similar to the memo that I had submitted in the last modification, when it was prior to it being a public hearing modification. We did point out essentially all the information that was already included. They're moving the house back, new residence rather than, than it being an addition. Previously, we had pointed out, it's not normally something that the board does as a modification, having it go from additions to being a new residence. But being a public hearing or a modification with a hearing, the board is certainly making it unique. And if approved, the board should certainly, should point out all the unique circumstances to sort of differentiate it from a potential other modification that might be similar to this one. There are, there are a lot of unique circumstances in this, moving it back, making it more conforming, reducing clearing, so it is a better project overall. And it is more in keeping with what the, what the planning department had, had suggested during the public hearing for the application.
Right.
But it, but it, you know, the board should be sure to, to point out the unique aspects of the modification.
Yeah, thank you, I agree, thank you, Tyler, for that.
Originally, Tyler, just for the record, you brought this before us for it potentially to go administratively as a modification.
Thank you, yeah.
And after some conversation about the precedent that that would have set, we thought it best to notice the neighbors and have a public hearing rather than just do it in an administrative fashion.
Right.
However, that suggests strongly the planning department's support of this particular proposal.
Right, yeah, we, we don't have any objections to, to the idea of moving it back and rebuilding it. It was just, it was something the board generally doesn't do as a modification.
Right, right, and Tim, thank you for the record for that clarification. That's, I think that's part of the uniqueness right there.
Right.
Yeah. Terry, any questions for Tyler?
Yep.
Great, thanks for all your work on this application, Tyler, thank you. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak this evening? You can speak, but you have to get up to the microphone, and I'll have to state your name and address.
John Donovan.
You're the applicant, okay.
Yeah, well, I'm the applicant.
We have your address. But you, I have to swear you in.
Sure.
Unless you're an attorney. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Just, first of all, thank you for your time, I appreciate it. And anything you can do to, to help us out, it's been a number of years on this project. We've tried to do everything possible to, you know, to, to conform to the environment, et cetera. And anything you can do to, to, to help us get started before the winter would be much appreciated, if in fact it is approved.
Right, right, it's, yeah, I'll just make a comment, as Tim said, it's an incredibly special area. This board knows it very well, as you can imagine. But I was joking, I did a site visit, and I actually did a seaward visit. I took a swim offshore today and enjoyed getting a full perspective. And, and seriously, it's such a beautiful area with the small cottages.
Right.
And you've got the two larger new ones that we're involved in there, but, and yours will be the third of, really, you know, this rebuild, which unfortunately is happening along the whole strip with an understanding. But, but I will say, I, we appreciate the gestures that you are doing as an applicant. And also, I must say, from my swim, the, your architects making the double gables and trying to break the massing down, I think, I think that's appreciated, that sort of design work to try to fit in better as well.
Oh, excellent, that, that makes me happy.
Okay, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, I guess, yes, sir, would you like, please come up and we'll just swear you in? You can come up, anyone can speak, we just have to get your name and address.
He's the next hearing.
Oh, you're the next hearing, oh, no, no, sorry.
Sorry.
You're not on deck.
Do you want to make comments about this application?
Sorry.
Do you want to make comments about this application?
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry.
You're, you're next.
No, 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 we're going to finish this first, thank you.
Okay, I think that's it then.
Does, does Rick have any?
Rick, are you, or? Yeah, okay, okay, good, thank you, Rick, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so in the matter of public hearing, the Donovan modification at 57 Sammy's Beach Road, East Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300-56-1-22. I make a motion to close both the public hearing and the public record.
Second.
I concur, thanks, Tim.
And then, Mr. Chairman, could I also suggest a motion to approve this modification?
At this meeting right now?
Yes.
I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I'm good with that myself, to keep things moving.
Okay, good also.
Terry, are you okay with that? Good, yeah, Terry, I mean, Terry, Beth, how would we go about that? Does he just make a motion to approve it?
No, it's just, I know the board wanted to discuss the application, and we can move forward with moving, with putting together a determination for the board's next meeting.
Okay, so then we'll, so you've heard, so we'll be all set then?
Because it's a modification, so it's not a full-on.
Great.
You have a little uniqueness.
Yes.
There you go. Okay, thank you, counsel, thank you, Tim, for that, and Terry. Okay, we'll get our paperwork together, and we'll move on to the next hearing in a minute.
Do you have the affidavit? You need an affidavit. Um, I don't think we, um, let's see, let me just see, have you posted the sign?
No.
Okay.
Two times.
I know. Usually there's a sheet of paper that you get mailed, that you bring with you, that gets.
Oh, you didn't bring that back with me, because that's a standard piece of.
Yeah, no, that has to, we need that for the file.
I can bring it later.
Can you bring it in, because your receipts are correct, and your, and you posted the property.
Oh, I bet there is a picture of it.
Yes, okay, all right, we can keep going, but we just need you to bring that in.
Yeah, I will bring it tomorrow.
Tomorrow, that would be great.
We're going to go through a report first, we'll call you up.
Yeah, we'll call you up, yep. Okay, our next public hearing, the applicant is Priscilla Heine. Lot size and location is 135,994 square feet at 2 Cedar Point Road. Grace, Grace LY for LY filed map number 8039, East Hampton. Tax map number 300-55-1-27.2. Description to allow a 950-square-foot pool, 45-foot square-foot spa, 675-square-foot patio, 330 linear feet of stockade and wire fencing, 20 total linear feet of retaining walls and a gate to remain within the town's jurisdiction of wetlands and front yard lot line setbacks. The relief sought as a modification of the April 6, 2017 zoning board determination. The zoning district here is an A2 residence, the flood zone here is a velocity 10, a VE10 velocity flood zone, and the secret class is type 2. And counsel, do we have a proper affidavit of service and posting?
We do not have the affidavit of service and posting. However, the applicant was able to produce the receipts that the property was properly noticed. And also, I understand from our member who did the site visit, that the sign was also there.
Yeah, I saw the sign today.
The applicant didn't realize he had to bring the affidavit with him, so he agreed that he would be able to bring it in tomorrow to the board, so complete the board's file.
Okay.
Okay, so I believe the board does jurisdiction, has jurisdiction to move forward.
Great, thank you, thank you, thank you, Beth. Thank you, Beth, okay, good, good, good. So this, once again, is in Board Member Brenneman's East Hampton District, Tim, if you would, please.
Sure, so this property is located at the junction of Alway Brook Road and Cedar Point Road. And so, standing out on Alway Brook, I started by taking a photo out there. I'm looking west towards Cedar Point Park, which is just past Cedar Point Road there. And to my immediate right in this photograph is the start of the scenic easement that really somewhat envelops this entire property. Now I've turned on to Cedar Point Road, and I've stopped just to take another photograph along there. And again, just to give some sense for the, the conditions and the, to the immediate right, again, would be the scenic easement. And in fact, I'm really looking at what would be the pool equipment kind of just through this shot, which we'll get some other perspectives on shortly. And there is the, the posting. It was very secure on the tree, so there was no chance of it blowing down.
I saw that, yeah, yeah.
Bungee cords, I believe.
Good, no nails in the tree, good, like that.
He could give lessons.
Yeah.
So now I'm just walking into the driveway, and one of the things, I think, originally on here was that the driveway also veered off to the right and went down toward a garage that's now been completely removed. I believe there was a gate there at one point that's been removed and revegetated along there. So Beth, if you zoomed into that a little bit, you'd be able to see both the, the fencing and the, the planting that was done, just sort of toward the right there.
Yeah.
Now I've walked up the, can you make that a little bit larger? Oh, yes, and so now I've walked up just that area a little bit more, and you get a better view of where they've blocked it off and replanted along there. Thank you, Beth, sorry, I couldn't tell what my photograph represented. So now I'm up by the house, a very modern home. And most of the issues that we're dealing with this evening do not, none of them relate to the structure itself, but relate to the equipment and some of the other structures around, which are behind this house. And so we have really two different things going on here. One is proximity of certain structures to the front yard line and proximity of some of the structures to a wetland. So I then went around to the. Thank you, I then walked down, you can see the building is on my right, so now I'm walking down the driveway along the northern part of, of the house here. And the pool would be kind of straight ahead, but you won't be able to see it from this perspective. I'll get that on the next. Before I did, just walking all the way around that way, I'm still to kind of the northern, western, northwestern portion of the house, and this is fencing that surrounds. And this is fencing that surrounds the pool area. The pool is directly behind this fence, so I'm right along kind of the northwest part of the property here. Okay, so now, I've gone to the back, and this is along the line of the swimming pool. So just a quick shot, that's that same fence to the right of this photograph that I was looking at from the other side previously. And then, the next photograph is the longer shot of the swimming pool. And I believe it's toward the end of this pool that is one of the areas where it is, one of the variance requests.
Uh-huh, yeah.
I then walked to the end of this pool, the far, far end of the pool, and the pool filter and equipment is down there. And that's sort of the opposite, you can see where the pool filter is on the survey, and that's kind of the opposite of where I was when I was out on the road taking the photograph.
Well, you said that's where it goes, yeah.
In fact, you can see the road through there.
Yep.
Now, I've turned around, and I'm heading east back toward the, along the side of the property. And that is one of the retaining walls, and I believe this is the retaining wall that's within jurisdiction of the wetlands, along this, along this walkway going up. Now, to the back of the property and the fire pit barbecue, which you can see on our survey. I don't know if you can see it on our survey, but that would be...
Fireplace, does it say fireplace here?
Fireplace, do you see fireplace on there?
Yeah, right here, where, to the right of where it says scenic easement in the big print.
Okay, yep, that would be it. And then, right behind that would be the beginning of the scenic easement and then heading toward the wetland. The next photo is of, in fact, down in the wetland. And this property does drop away from the home as you go toward the large wetland that is in the back of it. Doesn't really depict as well on that as it could. But you get some perspective of the way it starts to drop when I turn around from there and take a picture back up at the house. So that's it.
Great, great, that's a very thorough site report, thank you, Tim. Any questions, Terry?
No.
Okay, so, sir, I believe, are you the applicant, you are the applicant and the owner, or are you?
My wife and me.
Okay, you can, that's fine, you don't, she doesn't have to speak, you can speak on her behalf. You can speak, and I just have to have your name and...
My name is Cristobal Majerski, M-A-G-E-C-H-E-R-S-K-I.
Did you get that, Brittany, you might need that one more time, lower, maybe?
Thank you.
My father's fault, it's not mine.
Okay, good evening, I'll swear you in, unless you're an attorney. So could you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Nice to see you again. I believe you were here previously, there was a...
Yeah.
Noticing back then, or something like that, yeah.
Little bit disorganized. The only question which I have about the steps from the swimming pool over the east of the house, parallel to the house, because I thought this is inside of the building envelope, so it didn't, and it's quite outside of the wetland zone, so I didn't, so, but, you know...
We can ask Tyler to confirm the...
Sure.
He will, he'll speak after you, and he can confirm exactly which retaining wall is in jurisdiction. That was my best guess at what it was, so we'll see.
So that's, that was the only question. The fencing, which it seems to be a lot of it by outside, that can be removed anytime. I just put it for a visual looking of the swimming pool. I certainly would not like to have to remove the swimming pool, and that's about it. I have a notice there because I think that the spa, which is not used, as you see it, but it's inside of the perimeter of the swimming pool itself, which means it would fit inside of the square foot, so the swimming pool itself.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my impression, and that's, I would think that about it. I do whatever you suggest. The structure for the barbecue, I can remove that anytime. So if it's too much, now, the, at the time when it was built, it was kind of in the limit. We would rather use it, we can take it out, in your command, at any time, and that would be it.
Okay, thank you, well, then, we'll hear from the planning, and if we have any questions or your comments, we'll get, you'll be right here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, good evening, Tyler, again. Counsel tells me I have to swear you in again. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, Tyler Borzak for the Planning Department. This application is fairly straightforward. There's a bunch of little things that they're in for approvals for, and there's some, a few, like, housekeeping things that I just want to point out for the board. Well, first of all, the property was originally developed thanks to a 1998 zoning board determination, which granted approval for the residence. There's an artist's studio on the property, and it also had a swimming pool at that time, which was not constructed. They came back in 2002, they needed a variance from side yard for the art studio, it was built one foot closer than it was supposed to be. And then, they got their CO in 2002. After that, is when the current swimming pool was constructed. The current pool is about 300 square feet larger, not significantly larger, but it is bigger than what was originally approved. But it is in the same relative location. It's located 115 feet from the edge of wetlands, and would have similar impacts to the one that was already approved in 98. It should be noted that the survey doesn't discount the wetlands on, from the lot area. Removing those wetlands, based on my calculations, likely would reduce it just below 125,000 square feet, which would drop the front yard setback for accessory structures down to 50 feet. So the swimming pool and the pool equipment likely don't need variances. They're noted, because that's what the lot area was shown at the time, and it's better to overnotice it rather than undernotice it.
Yeah.
But if updated, it's likely that maybe only one-foot variance is needed for that edge of the swimming pool patio around, around the edge of the swimming pool.
And what was the second one, was the pool? And what was the second one that would not require a variance, I missed?
The pool equipment and the swimming pool.
Oh, the pool equipment and the pool.
Likely would not need it, based on, based on the, on the rough guesses on lot area that I, that I could get. But the surveyor should easily be able to update that, and I have a feeling that it's going to be reduced enough. The other thing is, there's a few small structures that are located within the scenic easement. If you look at the road frontage, the, a little bit of the driveway, a piece of the gate, actually go through that scenic easement a little bit. So those should be removed prior to a CO. It's a pretty minor area, so I don't think it should be an issue, and it may have already been done, but...
Which gate would that be?
If you look at the survey, as you come in, just on the edge of that scenic easement, the word is the word gate. See if I can pull, it'd be like right here.
Is that the one along the driveway?
Yeah.
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 That's the one that I think has been removed?
Yeah, I, yeah, I had a feeling it was.
Yeah, that's all been removed and fenced and...
Yeah, so, yeah, see, that seems like that that was already done. Yeah, it was really, it was, it was very minor stuff, but it was just worth noting.
Yeah.
I believe that might be it, let me just go over my notes real quick.
Your feelings on the fireplace?
It's fairly small, I mean, it needs a, it needs a variance, it could be in a more conforming location. The impacts are minimal. We didn't really have an opinion on it either way.
Could you point that, or Terry did?
The fireplace is just a nine-foot area.
Fireplace, we can find it.
I have it on mine, but I think she found it on...
Yeah, well, it was on the survey, but 91 feet away from the...
Where is that, can you point that out to us, on the survey?
Where is it on the survey?
Yeah, must be taken off.
Do I have a different survey?
Oh, is this different survey? What date is your survey, let's get this correct, so we know.
It's old. But here, here it is on my survey.
Fireplace is right here.
Oh, it's right there, we have an older one, obviously, we have an older one.
Yeah, there should be two, there was a 2018 one, and then a 2019 survey.
So there it is, right there.
Yeah. It's, um...
Yeah.
So what's the, let's get the data on it.
Yeah, so what we're talking about, counsel, we have the last survey revised February 11, 2019?
Yeah, that's what I have.
February 11, 2019. That was contours and features over northerly portion of property only. I guess we'd ask...
We asked for topography, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so the fireplace is here, and some of those retaining walls were up, were up in this area.
Right.
There's wetlands across the street.
Yeah, good.
There's wetlands directly across the street, and then, there's a large wetland on the property itself. Pretty significant wetlands in the area in general. But none of the structures are significant that are within setbacks. So we didn't really have any opinions on, on the variances in general.
Okay, thank you, Tyler, Terry, any questions for Tyler?
I'm sorry, on the survey, the unknown part of the scenic easement, I'm sorry, did I miss you addressing?
Oh, yeah, sorry, that's, yeah, that's the last thing I wanted to mention, yes. Originally, there was a scenic easement established when they did the subdivision of the property. Then, they added a second scenic easement in that 98 zoning board determination, and they required it to be filed with the town, but it never looked like they required it to be filed with the county, as we do now. And it's shown on the survey as proposed scenic easement, too. So I have a feeling that it never was filed with the county, so the board may want to require that it does actually get filed with the county.
It was filed.
Yeah, we did find that it did get filed with the town, but I have a feeling it was never filed with the county.
And that's both of them, were never filed with the county?
Probably just, probably just the second one.
The second one?
Yeah, the 75-foot one versus the 50-foot one.
The one that says proposed.
Yeah.
I did find a copy in the file. Yeah, do you want, you want a copy back? I'll leave the, this was the original, I'll leave it here. Thanks. Okay, thank, I have no questions, any, anything else, Tim or Terry?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for your work on this, Tyler. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this application? No? Okay, then, sir, I think we're all set, unless you have any comments, but I think we have what we need. If you can come up, please, sure, you can, you can add whatever you want. You haven't taken our time, go ahead.
All I want to say is that I will follow your direction.
Well, we appreciate that.
Whatever you suggest, I do.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Tim, if you would, please?
So, in the matter of Priscilla Heiney at 2 Cedar Point Road in East Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map, 300-55-1-27.2. I move that we close both the public hearing and the public record.
Second.
And I concur, thank you, Tim. Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our final public hearing this evening, I believe. Yes, it is. Okay, the applicant here is 90-35 Holding Corporation, or Core. The lot size and location, 22,651 square feet at 113 South Edgemere, Montauk, tax map number 300-28-4-23. Description is to demolish all existing structures and construct a 2,973-square-foot two-story residence with 1,430 square feet patio, 522 square feet of covered patio, 1,724 square feet of roof deck, excuse me, 100 square feet of stoop, a 588-square-feet-foot swimming pool, and new sanitary system within the town's jurisdiction of wetlands. The relief sought is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-4-20 of the town code is required for this application and any other relief necessary. This is in a B residence zone. The flood zone is X, and the secret class is type 2. And counsel, do we have a proper affidavit of service and posting?
For the last time, I reviewed the affidavit of service and posting, it appears that notice was proper.
Don't get me all emotional now.
No, I was crying. It was the last one.
Thank you, counsel. It's nice to go out on a winner, too, everything's in order, right?
Okay, so this is the official notice and posting, it was properly posted. And it's a very long driveway, right on, on West Lake Drive in Montauk. Next, that's a shot going, looking just south down West Lake Drive, not West Lake Drive, what am I saying? Edgemere Street, I'm sorry, okay. I don't know. South on Edgemere, the property is on Edgemere. Next is a shot looking up north on Edgemere Street. Okay, somehow that, this one is the applicant, the homeowner across the street. This is on the east side of Edgemere. The next shot, then, will be the shot up, looking up north on Edgemere. And next, there's a long dirt driveway going up to the house. This is the front of the house, this, this house is going to be totally, is proposed to be totally demolished. This is the, and the applicant's neighbor to the south side. And that, that house is near the driveway portion, the parking area, which is a dirt parking area. Just to show you the relationship to where this house, this structure is.
Where, sorry, where is this shot?
It came, it's through the...
That shot, where's that taken, is that this?
This is the south side of the property, that, of house that's going to be demolished.
That's the subject house on the right there, okay, okay, gotcha.
And now, I walked toward the, toward the pond, toward Pond, and turned around to the shot, that's the back of the house that exists today.
The west side of the house.
Yeah, the west side, yeah. And this is shot across from that same location, just shot looking toward, toward the pond, basically. And now, is that the edge of the, the open area of that? And that's a shot that, you see the steep drop-off with all the vegetation down to Fort Pond itself. And I turned around, and that's a shot from that location, where the vegetation and the drop-off starts down. There is some grading difference, I don't know if you can make it out that well, but it does grade down for a while, and then goes back up to the point where I'm standing. You might be able to see that. I'm not sure what side I'm on there. Oh, I know, no, I'm sorry, this is the front of the house now, it looks like something got out of order. But now, I'm at the front of the house on the north side, and it's just a shot down the north side of the house. It's mostly just vegetation, and, and that's it, mostly.
Right.
Okay, I thought I had something else.
Okay, great, that was a good report, thank you, Terry, Tim, any questions?
Nope.
Okay, do we have the agent for the applicant? Good evening, Brittany.
Good evening, Chairman Whelan.
I'll swear you in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, very slim board.
Yeah.
Just to confirm that the other two members will be watching the hearing and voting on the application.
And just to confirm, confirm that this is a creme de la creme up here.
I hope Roy's not watching in Aruba. So, I'm Brittany Bestrian, 21 Napik Harbor Road, I'm against it. I'm here representing 9035 Holding Corporation, the owner of the parcel land at 113 South Edgemere in Montauk. We're here this evening requesting an NRSP, Natural Resources Special Permit Relief, to remove the existing non-conforming residence, and to construct a 2,973-square-foot residence with patios, decking, and a pool. From aerial photographs, it's hard to see exactly when this house was built. It predates zoning, so probably somewhere in the early 50s. It basically, the house itself has been exactly as such since, since that date. There was a deck extension, they put in a new septic system, and one of the previous owners put a handicap ramp, but effectively, this property's been unchanged. and one of the previous owners put a handicap ramp, but effectively this property's been unchanged other than those minor additions, minor appendages since the 50s. As you can see, this photograph's great, it's got a very non-conforming relationship to both the northern property line and the pond. Our intention is to remove that house because of its age, because of its position, because of its layout, there's a lot of reasons that it's not workable. Rob Smith is our architect. He designed a site that moved the house completely landward and is conforming to zoning in all aspects, no pyramid.
Can I just interrupt, I'm just curious, I'm not sure if it's in the TAM. I'm sure it probably is, but the square footage of the house you're taking down? The GFA and, and the footprint, I'm just curious what those are?
I don't know that. I'd have, I don't know, there's no plans that have ever been on file because it predated zoning. So, and since we were taking it down, we never documented the existing residence because it was of no consequence. It doesn't appear on the town of East Hampton records either.
Right, okay.
Quite a small house today, as you can see.
If I had to estimate, I would say it's probably 20 by 40 with that little, I would probably say it's about 800 square feet on two floors, 1,600. And I think plus or minus, that's probably what we're looking at.
Okay, thanks, Britten.
So we submitted the plans and received the TAM from Tyler, and in that memo, he sort of outlined that, as you can see, this property is completely, not completely, but mostly cleared of natural vegetation. And Tyler said we could improve on the project by bringing the clearing back in closer to H-Pod regulations. And as well, we had proposed initially a 50-foot no-mo buffer on the pond side of the property. And we sort of reevaluated the clearing from that memo and also reevaluated the no-mo. And the survey, actually, I should confirm the date of the survey that you have as well, that you do have the survey that shows a 75-foot scenic easement as proposed, not a 50-foot no-mo buffer.
We received that on September 18th.
Correct.
So it's September 13th.
It's dated September 13th.
Yes, that is the correct survey. So the, the big change between the initial filing and that survey was the change from the 50-foot no-mo to a 75% scenic easement, which offers some enhanced protection to that area of the property. And as well, we proposed some additional revegetation, roughly about 3,000 square feet, to bring it a little bit closer to H-Pod regulations.
Did you say 2,000?
It's just about 3,000, it's 2,900, I'll give you an exact number.
It brings it to 15,220, I believe is what you said in your memo?
Right.
2,930 square feet.
Great.
Additional, bringing it to 15,200.
Great, thanks.
I just have to find my cover letter. Tyler, do you have my cover letter that I submitted? I just had it. Oh, no. 2,900, sorry, I should have stuck with my gut. Bringing it down, offering 2,930 square feet of revegetation.
Thank you.
So as I said, the project is completely conforming to zoning. We tried to improve upon the existing conditions. And to balance through our requests for the special permit, we've incorporated the following into our project's scope. The large scenic easement that I identified, the revegetation. Currently, there's no leaders and gutters or subsurface treatment of stormwater. We're completely removing the existing residents within the 100-feet setback. We're upgrading to a low nitrogen septic system. That septic system has design approval from the Health Department, pending receipt of a permit from this board, as well as the New York State DEC. We have a pending DEC application, expecting that permit any day. And sort of in summation, we were thoughtful about this project, taking into consideration the property constraints, as well as improving the relationship to the pond. You know, a big thing with the client, which you can see very well in this aerial photograph, is what's really nice about this property is their house is not blocked on either side by either of the other two houses. So by moving it back significantly, you have that sort of, you're a little bit more, your, your view is definitely changing. So that's a big, it's a big sort of gift, I think, for them to, to, you know, they could have renovated this house, they could have kept the house in its position where it is. So at the end result of this, should this board decide to grant it, is that we have removed all the nonconformities, we have offered a bunch of environmental upgrades, and I hope that the board sees these benefits and recognizes that we haven't sought any relief, even though we're in somewhat of a difficult site with its narrowness and its proximity to the pond.
Okay. Any questions for Britten?
Yeah, well, also in the TAM, it discussed, well, with the additional revegetation that you've offered, it still comes out that the property is overcleared by a little over 5,000 square feet. And there's notice in the TAM about the, basically the, the size and the design of the property, that there's a lot of under, underground, underground basement, kind of basement area, which could allow for three bedrooms. Because the residence as a whole appears to contain seven bedrooms, and it grows floor area 2973 square feet, not including the basement. And at the layout, they're suggesting they're possibly a more condensed footprint with more second-story space, as opposed to the way it's designed today, would shift it back further and allow you to revegetate even more to come closer to the clearing limit.
Well, I just want to, I don't like to use the word "overcleared", because a property that's cleared prior to clearing registrations is not overcleared. It's, I don't think it's, it hasn't been overcleared, that just, there's a nomenclature there. We've offered additional revegetation, which we know is not as good as the native vegetation that was there in 1950 before they developed the lot. We've tried to mitigate that concern. The TAM was written prior to our offer of that 75-foot scenic easement. And I would wager to say, I, I guess you could, you know, argue either side of this, but I think that basement living space is actually less obtrusive to a neighborhood. And to have a first floor with a, with a smaller second floor, you know, has less of an obstructive view of the pond to see through this property. I don't think that there'd be, if you look at the, you know, we had, we did a shallow drain field. I don't see anywhere else on this parcel that we could gain more revegetation in a, in a valuable location in as much as we gave that 75-foot scenic easement to the pond. I don't think any of these properties have offered or give, have a 75-foot scenic easement. I think that's very unique for this neighborhood and the depth of this lot.
Just to, so you know, it's not a small, you know, seven-bedroom, 2,900-square-foot house. It's not a small house compared to what you're replacing with, either. And as far as the use and the ability of, you know, generating, you know, all the, all the waste and fertilizing that goes with a house that size. Granted, the IA systems are certainly a lot better, and you're certainly, you're moving it back in the best possible location, we understand that. Counsel, let me ask you something, your final legal, one of your final may be legal. When, when we have a property such as this, as Britten says, is pre-existing, non-conforming with regard to clearing restrictions, when it's proposed to be stripped clear, can this board consider that, you know, that the, the whole site? How far can we go legally as far as bringing, bringing a site like this that no longer would have the exist, pre-existing residence on it, it's going to be stripped clear, to bringing it back up to conforming to things like, like, like clearing, coverage?
Well, the board has to consider that this property is already previously disturbed, it's not a pristine site. So when the board comes up, you know, it, just like your regular standards, there has to be a nexus between any conditions that the board is asking and the relief asked.
Right, but just legally, as far as legally, when it is completely being redeveloped, as far as our legal, the, the, going, you know, as far as?
You have to decide your, what the nexus is between, you have to, I mean, and you also have to understand that it's, it is a previously disturbed property.
Right, it's not like they're going in there cutting down trees to do this.
Right, so keeping that in mind, along with the fact that the clearing is pre-existing, but also with the redevelopment of the property, you know, what, you know, impacts that, the board is granting, has to grant relief for this house to be constructed. So what impacts do, does that house have on the pond? And can they be mitigated by whether it be?
The buffer, the IA system?
Right. So what are the, what is the mitigation to offset any impacts that this development may cause?
Right, great.
In the TAM, as it states, if non-conforming lots are redeveloped, the Town Code encourages nonconformities eliminated or reduced to the greatest extent possible.
Which is also what Beth is saying, I mean, as far as, but that's within our purview to find out what the balance is there and the nexus between this redevelopment and what's there, et cetera. Correct?
Right.
Right, well, thanks for that, Beth, thank you.
Now, is this, the lot width is 75 feet, is that substandard?
It would probably get diminished.
It's not substandard by lot area, it would get reduced side yard setbacks.
For the principal only, I believe, yeah. Any other questions right now for Britten, and she'll be back later, maybe? Great, thank you, Britten. Okay, good evening again, Tyler.
Good evening, Tyler Borsec for the Plenary Department.
Thank you, I'll swear you in for this hearing, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So you guys went over a lot of what I was going to talk about already, going through my assessment. Generally, the, so what the project is, is they're demolishing the existing residents, pulling it back out of jurisdiction or out of setbacks, I'm sorry, and constructing a roughly 3,000-square-foot residence, patio, roof decking, swimming pool, and a new sanitary system. Sanitary systems located approximately 230 feet, where 200 feet would be required. So they're outside of jurisdiction altogether for the sanitary system. The proposed residence and the associated structures are all more conforming compared to the existing residents, and the new sanitary systems exceeds the requirements for new sanitary in H-Pod. Generally, as nonconforming lots are redeveloped, the Town Code encourages nonconformities to be eliminated or reduced to the greatest extent possible. As such, the applicant is proposing to construct the new residence and the associated structures more landward, removing the pre-existing wetland setbacks, nonconformities. A large portion of the residence also appears to be completely outside of the NRSP jurisdiction, as well as the proposed sanitary system. Since the assessment was written, the applicants came back. They're proposing a 75-foot scenic easement with a revegetation, approximately 3,000 square feet of revegetation, most of which is in that area just landward of what's noted as the bluff on the survey. It, it should be noted that there's, the bluff on this property isn't regulated by the town, since it's on Fort Pond, although that doesn't mean it's not an important feature, it's just not regulated, there's no setbacks from this bluff. It's, they're only getting setbacks from the tidal wetlands on these properties. Total clearing is going to be reduced. Right now, they're at 18,150, they're going to reduce it to 15,220, where 10,000 would be the maximum level. So it's slightly under half of the, the difference between the two, of, of what they have now and what, and what they would be allowed if, if it was a, an uncleared property. We do make note of the amount of space in the basement. It is a large basement area, they have three of their seven bedrooms down there, four bathrooms. And, and, and we do discuss that the board may want to discuss themselves the proposed layout and if it meets the NRSP standards, but also weighing that against the, the mitigation that they're now offering, the scenic easement, the revegetation, and if that mitigates the size of the, the improvements. And the, and also removing the residence from setbacks altogether. So they are offering quite a bit of mitigation, but increasing the size of the residence. And does that meet the NRSP standards? And the property does get foretold.
Could you comment on the health of Fort Pond?
It's certainly a stressed water body. The biggest impact would be sanitary systems. Size of the residence does speak to the, to the impact. More people can live in a bigger house more comfortably for a longer period of time, so that's going to directly impact that sanitary. Although this is located well outside of, of what we would expect to see on a, on an upgrade. So it sort of counteracts each other almost to some degree, but it is still a large residence, and the sanitary will have impacts on Fort Pond.
Okay, and it is in an H-Pod area, as we know.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, Fort Pond recently has had algae and E. coli issues with the water testing that goes on there. And this property, and as far as NRSP, the, I mean, it has moved back outside of variance sta, uh, variance distances. However, it still looks like with the pool and the pool patio, it really has moved back, what, about 20 feet overall, perhaps, from where it is existing out?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't measure the exact, yeah, distance they're pulling it back.
I think with the smaller footprint, and that could be improved upon. And the, the intensity of use is a concern, the potential intensity of use on it.
Tyler, any, just a quick observation on this photo, is this would be the only house on this photo that would have a pool in the, behind it. Is there a prevalence of pools behind the house along here? Or is this photograph more common?
Not, not to my knowledge in the direct neighborhood. And I can't think of anything nearby off the top of my head. But the aerial, the next one.
Oh, that's helpful.
So that's a few, that's a few neighbors, nothing, nothing there. But not the greater neighborhood in general, I'm not, I'm not certain, not off the top of my head.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak? Yes.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good evening.
Hi.
Okay.
I'm Patricia Maurici, I live on the pond.
Okay, do you want to give me your address, for the record, your address, where you live?
111 South Edgemere Road, Montauk.
Great, 11131, you said?
Yes, right here.
Okay, oh, good, you're a neighbor, okay, thank you. And if, unless you're an attorney, I'll swear you in?
I am not an attorney.
Okay.
I'm just little me.
If you could raise your right hand, please, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, good evening.
So I'm here to weigh in on the application for 9035 Holding. Britten had stated that the applicant is considerate of the neighbors. In her talking, yes, they are moving the house back and demolishing it. What concerns me is that, first of all, is the 1,700-square-foot rooftop decking. So if the applicant is quite concerned about the neighbors, in that will be looking down, they'll have a bird's eye view of my backyard and the neighbor's backyard. Plus, I feel that in the evening or at the nighttime, they'll have to light that decking up, so there'll be bright skies when I'm trying to sleep. I live in Montauk and Mark in East Hampton. I have a 13-year-old daughter and a husband that live there as well. So that's, that's, that's a big negative for me. The other negatives that I feel is, well, I, I put together this package, and the East Hampton Star, the East Hampton Press just had this week, this article. Town bought parcel on the pond. And that parcel that they bought, they're talking about, is right, right here. And they're, the CCO-M, Montauk Community?
Concerned citizen.
Concerned citizen had pushed for this, to preserve the pond. It was a 1.2-acre parcel, waterfront land on Fort Pond in Montauk. So that's two lots down. It was, been a year-long struggle. The land just sits below Edgemere Drive. The property has been on the town community preservation fund target list for several years. The neighbors and water quality adv- advocacy. The neighbors and water quality advocates have been pressing for it to be protected from development.
Can I ask you, before you go on, there are two board members that are going to be watching this. Do you have more copies of this, so we can give them a copy?
I have one that I just kind of slapped together.
Yeah.
I can bring another one in tomorrow.
Oh, you have some more there? Does she have some more?
Another two, yeah.
She has one.
Yes.
Even one word would be helpful.
More would be helpful.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. And of course, that's my letter on top for the file.
Yeah. I'll leave mine in the file, too, so they can.
And then we have another article, Montauk Fort Pond Water Rated Harmful. So in there, Laura Tooman, President of Concerned Citizens of Montauk, told the board that there is significant nitrogen inflow issues, blooms that have fouled Fort Pond in recent summers. She says the pond is dying. In another paragraph, she told the board to the point there is, that there is harmful to go near and to swim in. All right. Then we have the East Hampton Star, I pulled off August first. A harmful blue-green algae or cyanobacteria bloom continues to affect Fort Pond, according to Concerned Citizens of Montauk, which tests results, they test every week, as of July twenty-ninth. While toxin levels remain low, C-C-O-M has gained, has again urged people to avoid contact with water until further notice.
All right. Just so you know, we're going to read through all this, so you don't have to read it to us, okay? Thank you.
Okay. So there's a concern there. Now, the DEC, one more thing. Just let me pull this off. Fort Pond has exceptional fishing for freshwater game fish like small mouth bass and wall-eyed that are seldom encountered elsewhere on Long Island. So we want to preserve these fish, seldom encountered elsewhere on Long Island. I feel with the runoff of all these patios, the roof decking is harmful to the water, as we all know. I also feel that the pool, I Googled, Googled map, Fort Pond, this pool would be the only pool on Fort Pond. So if you allow this to happen, you're setting precedence for others to follow. My question is also, is this pool going to be saltwater? Is it going to be chlorinated water? It's five hundred and twenty-two square feet. Not to say that the, also that the pool pumps will be running night and day, so there's noise pollution as well. The town also bought the Carol Morrison Park to preserve on the other side, to preserve the pond. It also bought on Second House Road, another parcel. So that was three parcels in the last year, again, to preserve this pond. We're living now, when I turn on Channel Twelve News, it's all talk about our water quality and algae blooms, which I'm concerned about. We have ducks, we have snapping turtles, which I found, every year I find a little baby snapping turtle or two. So the mom must be crawling up on my parcel or any of these parcels, bearing her eggs. Last week, I let one go on Industrial Road. She has that spot, her favorite spot. I haven't found it yet.
Can I ask you something? Just curious. Your house, I'm just curious where you and your neighbors, do you know where your sanitary system is located?
Right here.
It's back there?
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
Do you know how old yours is? I'm just curious, your system?
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay.
Okay, that's when we built the house.
Mm-hmm, good.
It's small. My house is seventeen hundred square feet. Their decking, rooftop decking, will be seventeen hundred square feet. And like, mind you, a night lighting up. Also, I'm not being vindictive, but I know the owner, residence, summer residence, is three houses down. So this house, he will not, probably not live in. It'll probably be guest, rental, things of that nature.
Okay, I think we should, I think we're.
There's a lot of patio, there's a lot of, there's a lot of concerns, a lot of runoff, a lot of, I know he's trying to make it right, but the algae blooms and.
Okay, I think we'll take all your comments into the record. It's just that we normally give you three minutes for people to speak, and you've had well over three minutes.
I'm very sorry.
No, we appreciate you coming out. We appreciate your concern and being here.
Well, thank you very much for letting me weigh in.
We'll read all of the input before we make our decisions.
And did you want two more copies? I can drop them off tomorrow.
I think, if you, we're not going to leave the record open. Does that, counsel, can you just drop them off tomorrow? We don't have to leave a formal leave the record open, do we?
Well, I mean, if you feel you need them.
I don't think I really need them. We have a couple in the file.
Well, we could have somebody make copies of them anyway.
No, we can just copy them ourselves. We're good. This is fine. We're good. But thank you.
I hope that the board considers downsizing for the.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
For Montauk community's sake. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. We appreciate it. Okay, is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak? Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Anna Gueble, and.
Hold on one second. First of all, you have a soft voice. Could you bring the mic very close and speak up?
Better?
Yeah, that's better. And we're going to have to ask you, we need your name and address, and I have to swear you in before you start to speak.
Anna Gueble, G-U-E-B-L-I. I live at one seventeen Edgemere Street.
Great, that's it. And then I'll swear you in, unless you're an attorney. If you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great.
Okay, so I live on this property.
Okay.
Right here. I don't want to sound redundant. I share everything that Patty Maurisi, I share the same feelings.
Great, well, we appreciate that. We understand. Without repeating everything, we understand you share that. We appreciate that.
My concern also is the roof deck. Just worried about if the house gets pushed towards the street. I'm just concerned that the roof deck with the lighting, noise, how close will it be to, you know, both of our houses? So that's really, you know, one of my concerns. Also, the owner does own two other houses on the same street. One is a residence and one, the other is rented. So I'm also a little concerned about, you know, being a seven bedroom house, whether that will turn into a rental or not. So.
And just for the record, the two speakers are on either side of the property, south and the north of the property.
All right, thank you, Tim. Yes. Well, thank you for coming out. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I just wanted to add a couple comments to close up the hearing. This board is charged with looking at mostly environmental conditions. The comments about a roof deck and lighting, I feel those are all neighbor issues. I don't know if there's an environmental impact. I'm sure my clients would be happy to work out details like that with their neighbors. I will point out that the second floor of the house is limited to a master bedroom and a master bathroom, so it's not an upside down house. That's not an entertainment space by an upside down house standard. I also want to remind the board and potentially the audience that there's provisions in the TAM code when you seek an NRSP that address some of the concerns they were having. An NRSP, again, is only required for a third, about a third of this house. Two thirds of this house is completely beyond jurisdiction. The septic system is completely beyond jurisdiction. And the algae blooms and everything like that is because of these old legacy systems that are predominantly on this street and circumventing the entire pond or on the water side of houses. Our septic system on this property is on the water side. It's a conventional standard.
On the landward side.
Water side. It's on the pond side. Our existing septic system.
You're existing.
And I'm sure that that probably is impacting the water quality in the lake, just like every other house that's on the water side. But the reason the TAM code exists to put septic systems two hundred feet beyond protected features is to improve upon that condition. Besides the fact that we're putting in a low nitrogen system, which are proven to reduce nitrates to, you know, nineteen milligrams. So that argument on this particular property in terms of this house is going to pollute because there's extra bedrooms, I really don't think technically or scientifically that's accurate. Three bedrooms in the basement, as I stated before, it's a preference. They could have put the three bedrooms on the second floor and not just had a master. This is a family of four. They wanted to have three bedrooms for their children in the basement. That's an architectural preference. And I will remind everybody that all roof runoff, all driveway runoff, all septic runoff, according to the conditions of an NRSP, need to be contained on site. Currently, that is not the case. There's no leaders, there's no gutters, there's no runoff control. And I'll also remind you that there's a seventy-five foot scenic easement, which adds an additional layer of protection, and the board could design what that scenic easement says. You know, maybe it's some sort of plant that's, you know, takes on a lot of water, or maybe helps with the runoff conditions that are created on adjacent properties that haven't been redeveloped. But the intention is to improve the existing conditions on this property, and I think that that should be discussed in the balance of the existing conditions. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Britten. Appreciate that. Terry?
In the matter of ninety thirty-five holding court at one thirteen South Edgemere Street in Montauk, tax map number three hundred dash zero two eight dash zero four dash twenty-three, make a motion to close the public hearing and the public record.
Second?
And I concur. Thank you, Terry. Thank you all for coming out. Britten, thank you. Tyler, thanks for your work on this. And Beth's work on this. We haven't wrapped up yet. You can, you can give Beth a round of applause anytime, Britten.
No parade out. I'm not going to be marched out.
You want a parade? They do that when they arrest people.
Counsel, we still have work to do. Okay, getting back to our agenda. Let's see. I think next we're up to, there are no extensions. Let's discuss, counsel, could we discuss Nigel Curtis? I believe you spoke with the applicant, if you would fill us in?
Yes.
We're, just so you know, we're finished with your, you don't have to stay. You're welcome to, but we're done with your application. Thanks for coming out. We appreciate it. Thank you. Sorry, counsel, if you would.
So if the board remembers Nigel Curtis, this is the sandbag revetment over on three ninety-three Cranberry Hole Road that was constructed pursuant to an emergency permit. The board had issued a POSDEC on August first, two thousand and nineteen, and requested that the applicant submit a draft scope within forty-five days. I have spoken to the applicant's agent and actually his attorney, and he had informed me that he, for whatever reason, never received a copy of the resolution. I'm not sure if it was some, he thinks maybe it was sent, he doesn't know what happened. So he just, he was not aware of the forty-five day time period or the requirement for submitting the draft scope or any of that. So he said he's more than willing to do that. However, he needs the additional time. So he had asked if the board would give him that time. So it was our suggestion that since he didn't have any notice of the resolution, that the board give him the forty-five days that he was originally entitled to. And he has now acknowledged receipt of said resolution. I did forward it to him today directly via email, and he has acknowledged receipt and that his client will be working on the draft scope for submission to the board.
Okay, well.
Do, does the town have a procedure in how they communicate an action like this?
I'm not sure. Unfortunately, Denise wasn't in today, so I wasn't able to follow up with her. I'm not sure if they're mailed out directly or emailed at this point. I don't know if we get receipt, return receipt requested. I don't know.
Yeah, we had the same, we had the same conversation with Beth, you know, today at the meeting, and I'd like to discuss it as a board, we could discuss it with Denise, to find out how these are tracked. But also, we were talking about that this sort of thing go out registered mail in the future.
It may be something that the board wants to consider as far as anything that we're giving a specific timeline to somebody within the resolution, that we get some sort of acknowledgement that it's been received. Technically, the time, you know, and maybe the board, I mean, the time does begin when it's filed at the clerk's office, not necessarily when the applicant, when it's received. Similar to, if you're going to challenge one of the board's decisions and file an Article seventy-eight, the time starts when it's filed in the clerk's office, not when they receive a copy of their determination.
Right.
Keeping that in mind, however, this is one of, if not the first time the board has implemented this procedure. So I think it would be prudent to make sure that, you know, the applicant is aware of it, and maybe going forward, now we know, you know, we want to make sure that everyone moves this along, so we don't keep coming back to this.
Yeah, who else? Did anyone else besides the attorney get sent this?
We don't know. He said he checked with.
Who was the attorney?
Andy Hammer. He checked with the other applicant. He wasn't the applicant either. He thinks the, I think First Coastal may have been the applicant. He doesn't believe they received a copy. He spoke, I think he spoke to them today. I can't.
Yeah.
He sent me an email today. I can't remember if he said he spoke to them, or, as far as he could tell, he didn't get the decision, or the resolution, and neither did they. Who knows?
So I think unfortunately, we won't have our back with us.
Right. From what I understand in conversations with Denise, she did send it.
Yeah.
So, but, I don't know. And it was filed.
Post office.
It was filed in the.
In the clerk.
In the clerk's office. We did receive a cop, you know, we had, I sent somebody up to get it today, and they didn't receive it from the clerk's office. So it was filed properly.
Great, great. Well, thanks for your work. I was just going to say, Tim, to add on to your, we talked about doing our procedural, going back through kind of procedures. We thought we might wait until a work session when the whole board is here, so it would probably be the November work session, which I think we'd all like to go over the whole procedures. We won't have Beth, unfortunately, with us, go over all the procedures. And I think we start between now and then to kind of get an agenda, like, things like this being, you know, we start getting an agenda for that discussion, because I think we all agree that we really need a procedure where things are legally tracked and in the file, and so this sort of thing.
Postings.
You know, the whole thing.
A lot of things.
And maybe as board members, we can all kind of start, you know, taking notes on what we want included in that, in that conversation, so we can really make it a thorough kind of update of that nineteen, whatever it was, eighty-nine or something, procedures from somebody's board. Yeah. I'm sorry, Tim, you want to say?
Well, my comment was simply going to be that this process, I think our board's concern has been the elongated period of time and the lack of any action on part of the applicants, and the lack of any incentive to act.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we really need to try to button this up.
Yes.
Send these things, registered mail.
Yep.
Return receipt requested, so that we close every possible door, so that.
Miscommunication, yeah.
Very, very critically important environmental issues like this particular application are addressed in a timely fashion, because otherwise, the dog ate my paper kind of excuses will continue, and so we've got to be able to be better than this.
Timeliness is very important, particularly in this kind of situation.
Sure is, yeah. And, right, I mean, as an example, there's a certain application at Montauk, and I guess is, when things are not acted on, they're just, the files are closed. I don't know if I can mention the name? Can I?
I don't know what you're talking about.
With...
Wrong?
No, I wouldn't, yeah.
I think it probably best not to, even though I have no idea what you're talking about.
But I think we're all in agreement, and that these things are pressing, and I know Beth completely agrees with us and the planning department, that, you know, if... And we did talk about these PAZDEXs and keeping these tight windows, right? And we all agreed 45 days is enough time to them, for them, but it keeps it moving anyway.
Right. I mean, the applicants should also be aware of the fact that they would be getting a decision and that they should pay attention to the...
The hearings.
Well, to the agendas, to see when their resolutions could possibly be on, and...
Yes.
But I think as this is the first one, and I think this, you know, moving forward, I think can have a better idea of how to go about handling these resolutions.
And we'll have a whole checklist of procedures that we can come back on, yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you, board members, and Beth, for that. Do we need any action on this right now? I agree with what the 45 days is.
I think you can just allow for an additional, you know, make a motion to allow for an additional 45 days to submit draft scope for it.
Okay, so this is in my...
So we can do that right now.
This is in my Amagansett district.
Just to button this up, do you have documentation that's in the file that confirms receipt of this from the applicant's representative?
I have, I can submit...
That would be satisfactory that this starts the clock?
Yes.
Or submit a memo.
Should we ask him to submit a "I have received"? Or is that, what's the easiest?
I think he wrote to, he wrote an email to myself, Denise, acknowledging the fact that he has received a copy, the copy of the resolution that I sent him today.
So we'll copy that email in the file.
At least begin with, copy that email in the file, right, with highlighted or something.
And he may have sent something else, but with Denise not being in...
Right.
She, I don't know.
Right. Okay, good. Well, thank you, Tim. Okay, are you ready? You good with me making this motion? Good. Okay, so I'll make, with regard to Nigel Curtis at 393 Cranberry Hole Road, Tax Map Number 300-128-1-28.2, in Amagansett, I make a motion that the applicants have been given 45 days to submit a draft scope for the EIS.
So that would be November 15th?
So we should do a date, Ryan, this being the first?
Let's see.
Yeah, let's put a date.
November 14th.
Plus, yeah, 45 days from October 1.
November 15th.
Okay, great, great. Until November 15th, 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
Concur.
Okay. Great, thank you. And thanks, Beth, for that. Okay, let's see, we have under, we have Corrilli, and this is at 26 North Seaside Avenue in Montauk, Tax Map Number 300-29-1-18.8. This is a modification request, consists of the incorporation of an IA waste disposal. System also includes the addition of a cellar entrance located 34 feet from wetlands. And Tyler, would you mind walking us through this? And maybe as Tyler does, I will say that something that came up in our planning... Tyler, why don't you discuss what just the variance is?
Sure, yeah. I think you have, do you have the file?
Oh, jeez, yeah.
I don't have anything for it.
Oh, boy.
I have, I have a few small notes. I think you have the plans in the file.
Okay, I hope I have the file here, let's see.
It was in there.
It was, okay. Yeah, it was in there at the meeting.
There we go, I do have it. Great. You want to come up? You want me to hand you the file?
Sure, yeah, I'll just do it.
Okay, I'll open this up for the board members to look at.
So there was an application, this is in the mid-'90s, I guess, and then they came in somewhat recently to get an extension of time, and as part of that, the board upgraded some of the requirements, the covenants and restrictions, no, not the covenants, the conditions of the approval. And this is, modification is part of meeting those conditions. One of them is an upgraded sanitary system to an IA system, which they're showing. The second part is they are showing a set of stairs on the residence, which I can point out. The problem being that they're actually slightly closer than the variance that was granted for the residence, which the board is unable to do.
Yeah.
So we had discussed it at the meeting, that potentially, if the board's okay with the stairs, which are fairly minor, that they grant it on the condition that they be changed and then resubmitted, showing it not being any closer than the existing setback, 57 feet or something like that, I think it was.
30.
37.
37, yeah.
Okay, so where were, what did we do? An extension of time originally?
It's a modification.
No, it's a modification, because they want to go, they have to get the new IA, because we approved that house, as Tyler said.
As long as they went to current standards?
Yeah, because if they get a building permit, they have to get a new IA.
Right.
The IA system part of modifications, fairly straightforward. The stairs part of it wasn't quite so straightforward. It encroaches further than the granted setback, which the board can't do through modification. So we would be okay with you granting the stairs as long as they submit a plan that shows it no closer than the existing setback.
Than the 37 feet.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Are you? Okay, good. Do you want to make a motion, Terry?
No motion.
No motion.
No motion.
Oh, not even for that, yeah. It used to be so much fun, Beth, in the old days.
I know.
Cameras, no gavel, no gavels going on. Okay, there's that, there's that. Okay, let's see. I think board members, I'd like to hold off, we'd like to hold off on the Simpkins, I believe we just got Savage, until we have the work session with her. And then we, as well, the minutes, I believe, have not yet to be posted.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, and that, yeah, so we will not...
That's it.
Counsel has some, she's been working this week.
Oh, the resolutions.
She's got some resolutions for us.
Forgot about it.
She did not slack off at all.
So I had actually a couple other resolutions prepared for tonight, which will be ready for the 15th. Unfortunately, because we don't have a full board tonight, and there were some people accusing themselves, and some people, and some certain people aren't here, we didn't have a quorum, or we didn't have enough board members for the decisions. So those two are Saul and Teppadino, which will be ready, which are ready, but will be here for Tuesday, the 15th. But they have been prepared.
Thank you.
What we have tonight?
You didn't send them to us, though, yet?
No, they will be sent. Is Brecker, Wanzelak, Stonefire Sunset, Kopinski, and then I also brought a modification of the Flokin Resolution that the board adopted last night. The choir logs, which were part of the original application, were included in this, in the board's last determination, which was a mistake, because it was withdrawn from the application. So this resolution just deletes the choir logs from the approval and from the request and from the approval that was granted, and that's what we...
Great, thank you so much. Okay, we'll start handing these out. Let's see, we have, we'll go from the top here, I guess, Kopinski, and that's in my district here. Maybe I'll give you yours so you all can kind of review these. Stonefire, that's you over there, that's that one, right? Wanzelak is you as well, right? Start reviewing those. And then Becker is, Tim, that's you. Brecker, pardon me. And then we have Flokin, which is, I can do Flokin for Joan, unless you'd like to handle it, Tim, if you have to.
Sure.
Thanks. Okay, I'll start off here with our, with this determination in the matter of Deborah Kopinski at Tax Map Number 300-174-4-11. And this parcel is located at 30 Devon Road in Amagansett in the Beach Hampton area. And board members, you recall, the purpose here was to construct a swimming pool with decking and to allow the existing decking, a stone walk, a wooden fence, propane tanks, generator, 296 square feet of clearing, all established without the benefit of an NRSP to remain on this parcel containing dewland and beach vegetation. We had a very thorough discussion and working our way through this application. At the end of the day, all board members did concur on this, and Counsel writes in the determination, it notes that board members, Delene and McGivern, are absent when this is adopted this evening. So I would like to make a motion to adopt this determination, pardon me, to adopt this, to approve this application.
Second.
Concur.
Thank you. Okay, who wants to go next?
Okay, well, I'll go next.
Ladies before gentlemen.
This is for Thomas Wanzelak, Tax Map 300-32.1-01-226. And if you recall, this is the application that had been previously approved for, at Montauk Shores Condominiums, to replace an existing mobile home with a new one, and that was back in, I believe, 2017. And it had been undernoticed for front yard variance for the shed, and so it was reopened, re-noticed, and we had the hearing. And the, for the shed, it was a unanimous concurrence and approval for the variance from the front yard. And again, I will note that Counsel has noted that there were two members, were Delene and Joan McGivern, that were not present for the adopting of this resolution, but I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Actually, you're approving the application.
Approving the application.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
And I concur. Okay, thank you, Terry.
Please go back to Beth.
They'll go back, yeah.
Oh, do you want to do this one, too? Okay, hang on, let me just take...
Do you want me to go?
Okay, no, that's okay. Stonefire Sunset LLC, Tax Map 300-17-1-1. And this was an application to, for some relief, to legalize some work that was done on a house at 54, the 54 Firestone Road in Montauk, and to allow the roof to be reconstructed in different configuration, and decking to remain in existence with a deck to be reconstructed within jurisdiction of wet freshwater setbacks, freshwater wetlands, rather, sorry. And this application, if you recall, had been a unanimous approval by all board members. And I make a motion to approve this application. Again, it notes the absence of members, Delene and McGivern, for this actual vote.
Second.
And I concur. Thank you. Thanks, Terry. Okay, Tim?
Okay, and I have a determination for Randall and Ada Brecker, which is at 18 Montauk Avenue in East Hampton, at Suffolk County, Tax Map 300-116-3-7.4. And this application was for, to allow an existing shed, which was located just 3.2 feet from the side yard line, and also was out of jurisdiction on the pyramid regulations. And the board was unanimous in denying this application, basically because the shed could be moved, and we thought that it should be moved to a conforming location. And so I will make a motion to adopt the determination as written.
Second.
Or deny the application.
Or deny the application.
Oh, deny.
So either approving or denying things, he's...
All right, well, I'm agreeing with the determination, which is to deny.
Deny.
All right, so I make a motion to deny the application.
Two seconds, I concur. Thanks, Tim.
All right, we're making this difficult. Okay, and then the matter that Counsel just spoke about, which is the modification of this board's determination of Flokin as it relates to, and is it Core Logs? Is that how they're called?
Core Logs.
Yeah.
Where the applicant had withdrawn the request for Core Logs prior to the board's decision, and we had included it. So this would correct that. So in the matter of Flokin at 17 Association Road in Waynescott, Suffolk County, Tax Map 300-200-3-15, I make a motion to accept this modification.
Second.
And I concur. Thank you, Tim. Okay.
Returning.
Yes.
And this goes, yeah, that goes back, and this goes, she gets that as well. Going away present right there.
Yeah. No, these go to him.
Oh, yeah, that's...
They go in the file.
Yeah, exactly. Good, good. Okay, Counsel, any more business on your end?
That's it for me.
That is it for you.
Oh, it's so sad. Harding is such sweet sorrow.
Right?
We're gonna miss you, but you're gonna come back.
Yeah, you think you'll miss us?
Yeah.
I will, you guys.
You'll be an avid watcher.
You'll be in the third row. You'll come back and visit, right?
I will, absolutely.
And bring your children.
Every Tuesday, I'm not gonna know what to do with myself.
Yeah, we'll just bring your children and some popcorn or something like that.
Exactly.
All right, so Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the East Hampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on October 1st at 8:56 PM.
Second.
I concur. Thank you, Tim. Thanks, Tyler. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.